All right, we will start the meeting. Welcome, everyone. This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 26, 2011. If you have a cellphone, if you could put that on silent or vibrate, we would appreciate that. We will call this meeting to order. We will begin with the invocation from Commissioner Henshaw.
Father in heaven, we thank you for this free country that you have blessed. We ask that you'll be with the victims of the shootings earlier this month and with their families. I pray that you'll give guidance and wisdom to the leaders of our nation and our state and give us the spirit of wisdom and peace in this meeting. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
We'll now do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not forget, God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone for coming tonight. We appreciate, you know, the public's participation in the public process, so thank you for coming. The next item is the roll call attendance, please.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Max Bauer?
Here.
Lemkool?
Here.
Henshaw?
Present.
Gilman?
Here.
Fleece?
Present.
Chairman Inman?
Present. Okay, we have a quorum. Next item is the approval of minutes. We have the minutes of December 29, 2010. That's the regular board minutes, and we also have the organizational meeting for January 3, 2011.
Motion to approve.
Support.
All right, moved by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fleece, to approve both minutes, December 29 and January 3. Any discussion? Commissioner Richardson.
Do you maybe want to separate those because I think you're going to have some abstentions on one and...
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Do we agree with that?
Motion's for the first one.
All right, motions for the December 29, 2010. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'll abstain.
Abstain.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Abstain.
Lemkool?
Abstain.
Henshaw?
Abstain, please.
Gilman?
Abstain.
Fleece?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Got enough?
I have the four.
All right. Reason for the public, you know, Commissioner wasn't in attendance of a meeting in December, especially the newly elected ones. They felt comfortable not approving those minutes because they were not in attendance at that time. Okay, now we stand for the approval of the January 3, 2011 organizational meeting.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gilman. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes. Okay, this is, the next item is the first public comment, and if we can have the clerk read the rules of the public comment, please.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. One, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. Two, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Okay, do we have any member of the public wish to address the board at this time? There is another public comment section later in the agenda, and if there are any items pulled off the consent calendar, I will allow public comment as well on those items. So, do we have anybody that wish to address the board at this time? Yes, sir. Come on up and state your name and address and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Jeff Connolly. Address is 3650 Bluff Ridge Drive, Traverse City, Michigan. I am the President of West Michigan and manage care for Blue Cross as well as B C N. So my intent here is simple. One, to thank you for the opportunity, bringing the business over to us in 2011. Two, a recognition that inherently this is a difficult transition. It always is, and that we are here to support you. And any issues that we have, understand that we will resolve them quickly. Three, I am a native of Traverse City. We have local employees. We've been here 30 years, plan on being here at least another 30, maybe more. So we have boots on the ground, ready to serve, and again, we appreciate your business and want to take the opportunity to just say thank you.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to address the board at this time? Only once, twice? Okay, we will close public comment. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda, Board.
Motion to approve.
All right, moved by Commissioner Lemkool, seconded by Commissioner Wheelock. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes. All right, so we have an approved agenda. We will move on to special orders of business, and before we start that, I'll, for the new Commissioners and some folks in the audience, we have a really deep tradition here in Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners. For a long time that we try to recognize and celebrate those individuals that serve the public, both as elected officials, as department heads, and also volunteers in the community that sit on our boards and commissions. So as those people go on with other paths in their lives, we'd like to recognize their service to Grand Traverse County and the citizens of the county for their time and effort and energy, and so we will do that at this time. We have a number of items that we want to present at this point. First one is to Steve Cassons, otherwise known as Stefan R. Cassons. And if I could have Steve come up, and I would also invite the interim airport director, Kevin Kline, that we can introduce him to not only the audience but to the county commission, if you could stand up here. And we have John Schmitke, who has been our chairman of the airport commission for the previous two years, here as well to help celebrate Steve's achievement at Grand Traverse County. And I will read the plaque and then we will go out and then present it because I don't have a traveling microphone, so, for the audience. But this is to Stephen R. Cassons, Cherry Capital Airport Director, from 1977 to 2011, presented this 20th day of January, 2011, on behalf of the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, in appreciation of your 34 years of service and leadership. I'd like to have an opportunity to, John, if you'd like to say something, and Kevin, if you'd like to say something at this time?
Use the microphone.
Sure. We can...
John Schmitke, 14696 Mallard Drive. I've had the pleasure of serving as your representative to the Northwestern Regional Airport Commission for the past five years, and during this time, I had an inside view of how Steve operates the airport. And just as an example of how much foresight he has is that you saw the example in the 2009 Cherry Festival Parade, that big snowmall that went down the street. Steve saw that was available, went out and got it, and it's a combination blower, blade, and pusher, and we got those before O'Hare did. So that is how well Steve does the job. And this is just another example in a long series of governmental recognition for Steve and the super job he has done over the past 34 years. As the letter from Dave Camp said, that Steve inherited an airport with a deficit and turned it into a situation where there's no local tax dollars used to operate the airport. And in fact, the pilots recognized the quality of the Cherry Capital Airport and named Cherry Capital Airport as the Airport of the Year in 2005. So thanks again, Steve.
Hello, Kevin Kline. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I welcome the confidence that the airport commission has placed in me as the interim director, so thank you very much. But at this moment, I'd also like to say thank you to Mr. Cassons again for what a great career and a great airport that he has provided our community, but also to take it one step further, the mark that he's left on the aviation industry in itself, I think will be ever, will be long lasting. We, as Michigan airport executives, have come to learn a lot from Steve and his contributions I think will be long lived, so I want to thank you again for being a great mentor and a great manager.
It's kind of odd being on this side, but, you know, in my personal opinion, there isn't a plaque big enough and there isn't enough that we could say on a plaque to really tell how we really feel about the job Steve Cassons has done for the residents of Grand Traverse County and the region. I was first on his board, the airport commission board, before I became a county commissioner for several years, and then when I was elected county commissioner, obviously we had a county commissioner rep, so I was transferred out, kind of. But I got to know Steve. I knew his leadership style. He treated the airport like a business, dedicated his, really his life to the airport and the success of the airport. And we are really the model, really for regional airports in the state and in the country. If you come in and they fly into Traverse City and look at our new regional airport, people are just stunned at the beauty and the architecture and the quality of the construction and the layout and the design, and it was all spearheaded by Steve Cassons and his group at the airport. It's obviously one of the airports in the state that does not have or require to have public money and infusion or support to keep the operations going, like most airports. So I'm very proud to have known Steve and very proud to be at his side before and during this tenure that I've had as the county commissioner representative, and I just want to applaud Steve for everything that he has done, his heart, his soul, and he's been just such a valuable key player in our community that I think he deserves a standing round of approval. Autographs and...
We knew that already. I just would like to say, I don't have a really a prepared statement, but I would like to say thank you very much for the honor to serve the Grand Traverse County and the region in allowing me to manage the airport over all these years, and it's been very exciting. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us. It's a very dynamic field. I've really enjoyed all the people I got to work with over the years. I see Ralph Safrini at the back, Larry Fleece. We've had different relationships, Herb Lemkool. The kinds of relationships that we've had going over the years has just been super, and I've really appreciated the support that we have received from Grand Traverse County because without your support, we never would have been able to build the kind of facility that we have there now, and that's very important in attracting air service that we currently have, retaining that air service, and getting additional air service. So we are trying to provide the facilities that the airlines want to use, and we've tried to do it by providing costs that they find us to be very desirable as far as a community and serving our community. So I really appreciate all the support that you have. I'd like to thank John Schmitke, Larry, who has served on the board. I don't know if there's any other members that are here that have served on the board, but I want to say thank you very much for their service. They've done it without compensation, and they've been concerned for their community, and they've done the very best that they can too. So I just want to say thank you to them for their service, and thank you very much for the opportunity to serve you. Thank you.
road commissioner, who had served 12 years on our county road commission. He did call me. He is on a flight coming back to Traverse City. He expected to be here, but due to weather conditions, probably will be late, and depending on delays in Detroit, he, we might have to delay this presentation until next month. So we'll see how it goes. So next, we will go to the boards, other boards and commissions within the county, and next I'd like to call on Eugene Vaughn. Let me read it first, so we get the microphone situation. Got to keep remembering myself. We have these really nice certificates that staff puts together for those individuals that have served on our boards and commissions and are now moving on to something different in their lives, but we want to say as the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, it is a proud acknowledgement of your involvement in making Grand Traverse County a better place for us to live and enjoy, for your time and service and valuable contribution to the Commission on Aging, appointed in January of 2004 and serving through December 31, 2010. We sincerely appreciate and thank you. Congratulations. Okay, next is Lori Wells. I'll read this. On behalf of the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, it is proud to acknowledge your involvement in making Grand Traverse County a better place to live and enjoy, for your time of service and valuable contribution on the Commission on Aging, appointed August of 1997, and serving through December 31, 2010. We sincerely appreciate your efforts, and we sincerely thank you.
There you might mention that Lori is not really leaving.
No.
She's going to continue on, but as a city employee, right?
Yes.
Right.
All right. Is Peter Haddix here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. I'm just going to grab him as a pilehead, sir. Peter, the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners is proud to acknowledge your involvement in making Grand Traverse County a better place for us to live and enjoy, for your time and service, valuable contribution on the appeals board for building code, soil erosion, health, international fire code, appointed in November 1995, and serving through December 31, 2010. We thank you for your service.
Mr. Chairman, you forgot George. George.
Oh, he's just coming. Yeah, we're not taking them exactly, or I'm taking them in the pile I got. All right, we'll get to them. Mr. Burkholder, James Burkholder? Come on up. The Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners is proud to acknowledge your involvement in making Grand Traverse County a better place for us to live and enjoy, for your time and service and valuable contribution on the appeals board for building code, soil erosion, health, international fire code, appointed in November 1995, and serving through December 31, 2010. We thank you for your service.
Jim, didn't you sit on the road commission for a number of years, too?
Yeah, yeah, sure did.
Yep, thank you.
Peter Heathercutt, is he here? I don't see him.
I don't see him.
Okay, we can get that to him. I know Dave Rapson, I think, could not make it tonight, but we can get that at the airport commission meeting. George Macbeth. Come on up. We always save the best for last. The Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners is proud to acknowledge your involvement in making Grand Traverse County a better place for us to live and enjoy, for your time and service and valuable contribution on the Commission on Aging, appointed in November 2004 and serving through December 31, 2010. We thank you for your service. All right, that concludes the recognition items for that part. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. We will now move on to the consent calendar. If the clerk can read the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by granting non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item in the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, perceived and filed or approval is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Receive and file. One, board correspondence rotary letter of December 29. Two, resolutions to rescind memorandum 16 for remonumentation, Charlevois County and Ottawa County. Three, Brownfield redevelopment authority, special meeting minutes of October 19, 2010. Four, Brownfield redevelopment authority, regular meeting minutes of October 27, 2010. Five, Northern Michigan Substance Abuse Service minutes of November 1, 2010. Six, Economic Development Corporation minutes of November 9, 2010. Seven, Brownfield redevelopment authority minutes of November 24, 2010. Eight, Grand Traverse Community Collaborative, December 2010 minutes. Nine, Resource Recovery Council minutes of December 2, 2010. Ten, Economic Development Corporation minutes of December 9, 2010. Eleven, Central Dispatch Policy Board minutes of December 9, 2010. Twelve, Joint Sewer and Water Committee and Board of Public Work minutes of December 13, 2010. Thirteen, Conservation District minutes of December 13, 2010. Fourteen, Conservation Resource Alliance minutes of January 7, 2011. Fifteen, Public Health and Safety Committee draft minutes of January 5, 2010. Sixteen, Resource Management Administration Committee draft minutes of January 12, 2010. Seventeen, Ways and Means Committee draft minutes of January 19, 2010. Referrals, non-approvals. Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Eighteen, Child and Adolescent Health Center grant, youth health and wellness center. Nineteenth, Child and Adolescent Health Center grant, Kingsley Adolescent Health. Twenty, Non-Community Water Supply Renewal Agreement. Twenty-one, Grand Traverse Regional Community Foundation grant. Twenty-two, Approval of Organizational Chart for Grand Traverse Health Department. Twenty-three, Health Department grant acceptance from Rotary charities. Twenty-four, Community Corrections, Acceptance of Additional Funding. Twenty-five, Community Corrections and Traverse Area Support Services contract. Resource Management Administration Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Twenty-six, District Court Grant Award, Mental Health Services for sobriety court participants. Twenty-seven, Planning and Development, Grant Agreement with Rotary charities. Twenty-eight, Request to Purchase Service Credit, David Bauer. Twenty-nine, Agent of Record for Grand Traverse County, Great Northern Benefits. Thirty, Abandonment of County-Run Baseball Program. Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following resolutions. Thirty-one, Solid Waste Planning Committee Appointments. Thirty-two, 2011, Grand Traverse County Tentative Decorization Ratios and Estimated CEV Multipliers and Classification Definitions. Thirty-three, Approval to Purchase BSNA Software. Thirty-four, MERS Defined Benefit Retirement Plan Funding. And thirty-five, Board Appointments for Commissioners, District Court Judge, and Administrator.
Okay, you have, we have read the consent calendar, and basically, for those folks that might not be familiar with our processes, is that these are items that have been previously discussed during the month by the committee of the whole of the Board of Commissioners, and these are recommendations coming in to the full ratification of the Board of Commissioners. With that, does any member of the public wish to pull any item off the consent calendar for further discussion? Okay, I will now move to the Board of Commissioners. Does the Board of Commissioners wish to pull an item?
Number two.
All right. Number two would be, under receive and file, Herb. Okay.
I would like to pull item number 28 and 30, please.
Commissioner Wheelock? Was that number 20?
28 and 30.
30, okay.
28 being the request to purchase service credits for David Bauer, and 30 to be abandoned of the county-run baseball program.
All right. Any other items? Commissioner Max Bauer?
Item number 34, please.
Any other items to be pulled off the consent calendar? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number two, 28, 30, and 34?
So move.
Commissioner Richardson.
Support.
I move, my Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Wheelock. We will have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemkool?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Yep.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Okay, the consent calendar is pulled with the exception of those items as indicated. For the members of the public, we will address those items one by one after we get done with the administrator's report. So next is item H, administrator's report. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is just a report. We had a lawsuit that was underway, Moore versus Grand Traverse County. Mr. Moore was a security employee of DK Security for the county and sued the county for discrimination. While that typically would be an item that would be handled through our insurance carrier, Al Schneider, our county prosecutor, offered to handle that item on our behalf, and I think he's worked on it now for the last six or eight months. That item has now been settled and dismissed from the court, so the issue is over, and we're no longer being sued as a result of that. The court dismissed it without, I guess with prejudice or without? With prejudice, which means it can't be brought back. And I just wanted to report that to the board and thank the prosecutor for his work with his staff on our behalf, taking care of this lawsuit in his regular, as part of his regular duties, saving us a significant amount of money. You all know what it costs us every time we get in a lawsuit, and I wanted to thank him publicly for his success in this regard and his hard work.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Next, do we have the...
The claims summary for the month of January. I've provided a copy, and for the, just for the benefit of the new commissioners, this is a requirement by state law to report the claims to the county board. We have a finance committee which reviews basically the claims and accounts, the immediate payment, and the health claims, which are summarized on the page here. And then we also report the payroll and the benefits posting for the month. We did not have time to complete the benefits posting when we put this together. So the total claims that we're asking for approval for the month of January are $7,304,648.85.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Fleece, to approve the statutory finance committee claims and accounts as reported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Max Bauer?
I will be voting no. The day has not dawned when I will approve a $372 bill for 12 employees to have lunch at the Wellington Inn.
I will try to respond to that. At claims and accounts, there was a question regarding our Martin Luther King Day and in terms of a policy that we have at the county regarding expenditures for that day for our department heads, and I guess what we've determined at this point, we don't have a particular policy that really gives, really good direction. We've done a multiple number of things. We've had the Hagerty Center for the whole day. We've done the Civic Center, and then they've come back here. We've done a multiple number of things between the various areas within county government. So in all likelihood, that item, in terms of clarifying our policy regarding training, would go to our administration, res... would go to our administration Resource Management Administration Committee in February. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Mr. Chairman, if I could point out two.
Yes, yes.
I'm not familiar with all the particulars of this item. It certainly will become. But as you stated, it is not unusual for us to pay for trainings, either to rent facilities and to pay for food, you know, when the employees are required. While we don't have a specific policy, I don't want to give the impression that it's willy-nilly and it's not managed. Every time one of those requests come through, we make sure that they file, follow IRS guidelines and state budgeting guidelines to make sure that they're legal expenses, and those are done prior to those happening, so we always check those things. This is, as you said, has been done in many situations. For example, the Hagerty, the center we used for our training day was certainly one. Another example would be Commission on Aging. I think Commissioner, which you sit on, which holds a Christmas party every year for their employees and serves food and has a breakfast for them. So, there are a number of things, and in fact, this county board holds a wellness luncheon for the county employees, where they bring all the employees to the Civic Center. So, this is not unusual, but I will check into the facts and report back to the board about what else is involved, because I'm sure there's more than just a lunch for 12 people for $372.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion? Okay. We'll have a roll call vote on that, please.
Commissioner Max Bauer?
No.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Okay. Are there any other items in the administrator's report?
Just one thing I wanted to point out. We did receive requests for proposals for what we'll call budgeting for outcomes, performance-based budgeting. We received two bids that came in last Friday at 4:00. One was from the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, which many of you, I think, saw the video of that group, which is through ICMA. And the other group is Jim Christinger, who is an associate with Public Strategies Group who does budgeting for outcomes. So, it was the two groups that we anticipated receiving bids from. We have met as a management team and reviewed those. Remember, we asked for requests for qualifications, and the next step would be proposals. We, as a team, felt that both companies had significant merit, and the next step would be to then have phone conferences with each of the consultants so that they can get a better understanding of what we're looking for in the county. There'll be two. We'll have a, the management group will meet with those consultants on a conference call, and then commissioners will be invited. I hope you can all attend and have a conference call yourself with each of these groups. This will help them understand where we're at as a county and where you want this proposal to go. And then they will be asked to file formal proposals, including breakdowns of each component of their process and costs associated with that, so you'll be able to look over those costs. So, when that time calls and comes and Katie calls and asks if you can make a meeting to do a conference call with these folks, I hope you will be able to. And then the other thing I would ask is if you're able to do it with one, I would ask that you do it with both, so that you have a fair comparison, and that'll happen in the next week to 10 days.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Henchel?
Question about this process. Is hiring a consultant firm something that comes before this board, or is that something that is arbitrarily decided?
No. All contracts have to come before this board and bid awards, so it will come before you. We're also, just to throw this out there so that you know it, we're also looking at a staff at, in the event that the cost is something that is too much for the county board to consider, we're going to look at components of this that we may be able to do for you internally over a period of time. So, you may see a third proposal there that'll give you some components that you can look at in the event that you feel you can't expend the money that it might cost to hire this person. So, you'll have a couple of choices there when we bring it back. So, after you review it, they'll be given two weeks to put proposals together. Then when we have their formal proposals, we'll look them over, but then we will bring them back to you for a decision.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions regarding the administrator's report? All right. Move on to items removed from the consent calendar. We will start with item number 2, under receive and file. Commissioner Lemko, will you have that item?
Yeah. I think I'd like to have this brought before our Resource Recovery Committees to be able to discuss whether or not we want to join in this. We've always had some concerns about remonumentation and how it's funded over the years, and I think it would be a good discussion for us to be able to learn more about that and whether or not we also would like to join in on these resolutions. Resource Management Recovery. Excuse me.
Resource.
Resource Management Administration Committee. So, I'd like to refer it to that, if I could, please.
Okay. Without objection? All right. It is done. Moving on to item number 28.
Mr. Chairman, I vote this item, and as per our previous conversations, I'm just really concerned that this gentleman is being advised with some really bad information because the actuarial that was provided to him and to us from MERS, the numbers just don't make any sense. They're just, the numbers just simply do not make sense. So, I would be voting opposed to this because I just think that the information that we have to make a decision are too far-fetched to even consider.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to point out that I passed out a letter from Dean Bott indicating concern over doing this because of the unknown cost to the county, and wanted to get that information to you as well.
Okay. Commissioner Max Bauer, and then Commissioner Richardson.
I share Commissioner Wheelock's concern about the numbers. I think we have to govern by the numbers, and my other major concern is the precedent that this sets. If we do it for one, we need to do it for more than just one individual. And as the memo states, there's absolutely no way to determine the cost. I don't believe the MERS numbers, and I will be voting no.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, first of all, the memo that was passed out, which shows the results of the vote from the RMA Committee, shows the nay votes as Gilman, Henchel, and Wheelock, the nay votes were actually Gilman, Henchel, and Richardson. So, for those of you who've seen the memo, that there's a small discrepancy there. I would agree with Commissioner Max Bauer that this is a bad precedent. Mostly, I think that what we don't want to do, what we're trying to avoid, is increasing our unfunded liability. And basically, by allowing employees to purchase years of pension credit, we're increasing that unfunded liability. Every time it happens, we increase, and we don't even know how much we increase it by. So, for, you know, for that reason in itself, I think that's enough to vote no. I would like to make a motion that we deny the request for Mr. Bauer to purchase the two years of service credit.
Second. All right. Moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Gilman to deny the request to purchase service credits through MERS. Is there discussion? Commissioner Fleece?
Well, I think just for the record, you both spoke of setting a precedent. The precedent's already been set. We've allowed three individuals, county employees, and I think two of them or three, all three were in the administration.
It was the health director, the judge, a judge from district court, and, I'm sorry, I can't remember the third. Pardon? And a road deputy.
So, the precedent's already been set that we allow it. We've had a judge, a department head, and a deputy take advantage of the program, and I understand the concern on the funding, but by the same token, why wasn't the first request denied based on that? So, I have a question of fairness here. It's Mr. Bauer's request. It's, I don't think we set in judgment of whether the numbers they gave to him were right or wrong. That's not our job. Our job is to whether we're going to allow it or not and what the impact perhaps would be on the county. I think it was, because it was allowed three previous times, I'll vote yes for it.
Okay. Commissioner Henchel?
With regards to precedent, I've never approved one, so I'm starting with precedent now. I do not gamble with my own money, and I will not gamble with the people's money in the form of tax dollars, and from what our finance director has given us suggests that this might be a gamble with the people's money that's in the county's treasury.
Okay. Commissioner Gilman, did you have?
When was the last time that we provided? Do you have that?
Well, it's been a while. Just a second. We'll have that for you. 2001. I think it was Mr. Kiesler. Oh.
Fred was in 2005.
I think that was the newest one.
And I think that's the most recent. Yep. 2005.
And at what point did we go, move from the defined to the?
2001. 2001.
So, the intent was to try to move away from this type of arrangement ultimately?
Clearly, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other com, yes?
I just, I just suggest that if the board, besides your action tonight, if you feel strongly about this and you're not going to consider these things, it might be in your best interest to consider at committee a resolution from the board that would say, "We're no longer going to consider these kinds of actions on behalf of employees." If you feel that strongly about it, you know, we could put it in, we can memorialize it, and then that answer will be there when people come and ask as opposed to individuals still coming. It doesn't happen very often, but it might be good for you to consider as a position of the board.
Commissioner Lemko, and then Commissioner Fleece.
I made the motion at our regular meeting to be able to approve this, but, you know, I also have a lot of respect for our finance director and his way with the numbers and looking at all of it, so I have to respect that. So, I will be voting against this.
You'll be voting for it?
For it.
The motion, yes.
Yes. And we'll repeat the motion before we do this. Okay. Commissioner Fleece?
Dean, would it make a difference if it's defined benefit or defined contribution if the employee's asking?
But this employee is requesting, he has the defined benefit.
Right.
With defined contribution, you would not have this type of request because we pay on an annual basis the current cost for defined contribution. There is no future cost. It's funded at a percentage of payroll. Defined benefit is an entirely different retirement. It's based on a formula that includes years of service, a multiplier depending on?
2.5% in this case.
And ultimately, over time, what our funds in our retirement system do. And that is my primary issue with this. If you read the fine print in the document that was provided to the employee, the last sentence clearly says this is an estimate, and the employer bears the risk if the estimate doesn't cover the cost over time.
Well, and the numbers that are quoted in that actuarial are that he would get a 4.5% pay increase each year and that the MERS would return 8% interest on their money.
I believe Dennis explained some of that when you discussed it. There are a number of assumptions over time that may not play out the way MERS is estimating today for years into the future. That's the risk that the county, that the employer bears.
Do we have a liability if a veteran is on defined benefits and asks for the same thing? Is there a statute that governs that?
There's no veterans' preference for pension benefits that I'm aware of.
Because the ones that I'm familiar with, I've never heard of one like Mr. Bauer's requesting here, but over the years, a lot of people bought their service time, veterans.
Right.
And I'm just wondering if that's, if that's just gratuitity on the part of the county and the city, or is it provided by statute?
No. In the, you know, in the MERS plan, which has changed over the years, it was at one time a public body. Now, it's a private entity.
It used to be under the state.
It used to be under the state. And there were, you could be credited with military service and other state service and other government service for years of credit towards your defined benefit. So, there's a lot of changes that have taken place, but as far as whether this person who's not a veteran is applying, is asking to purchase service credit as opposed to a veteran, there's not going to be any difference in that regard.
The only remark I would make is that, I guess I don't recall in the last 18 years that the Board of Commissioners has ever denied a request based on the reasonableness of why they're coming forward in terms of buying years. And it, if memory serves me right, the majority of them have been to accommodate an expected retirement time and to coincide their benefits with that time, and it was a way for that individual to do that, either for health reasons or whatever. And it was, it was a way for us to kind of fit those two things together for, you know, a long-standing, good employee with, you know, impeccable record with the county. We've been able to accommodate, you know, those requests, and it's been at their, their cost, is based on the assumption that, you know, MERS is doing the right calculation.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
And, you know, I've looked at this different ways, but the risk, there's a risk to the employee as well, the employee's purchasing an annuity. And so, I mean, this could work the other way. I don't, maybe Dean, maybe he can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, if the employee doesn't live to his life expectancy and he's paid an amount based upon those actuaries and actually the county could gain, I don't know. I mean, it's a risk. It's a risk both ways.
That's absolutely true.
And so, you have to look at your, at both sides of this.
But there is a beneficiary benefit as well, but that is true. I mean, should this employee die before he, I think his planned retirement date is in 20?
32.
27, I believe.
28, 28.
But Al's absolutely correct.
The only second remark I would make is, the reason I would be concerned about moving forward with this particular request is the information we received at the Committee of the Hall that he seemed motivated to buy the two years of service for the reported gain he would get based on what MERS projected. And I guess I'm in the camp of Sonny Wheelock that if those numbers are off or incorrectly stated, you know, are we doing an injustice for this gentleman to buy that, years of that dollar amount and find out really that really wasn't the gain he was going to get? And are those actuariales really based on, you know, what the true expectation of returns are going to be? So, it's not that, my personal feeling is, you know, I think we should try to accommodate somebody's retirement, and if we can, if they got health reasons or if there's something going on in their life where they absolutely have to buy a couple of years to make things right, I'd like to still look at those situations as long as I feel comfortable that he's getting the correct information from MERS. But in this case, I think that the numbers, to me, do not look right, and I think that we owe this guy an opportunity to go back and say, you know, I want to take a second look at this thing, and that would be the reason for my denial. Commissioner Gilman?
I don't think any of us in here on the board would, if somebody came before us and said they wanted to start a program or if they wanted to incur a cost to the county, they said, "Just kind of leave it open-ended. We're not sure what it's going to be if we'd vote for it." And I think both, you know, both arguments, both ways, whether or not he's going to benefit or the county's going to benefit in the end, not knowing those numbers, I think we need to, we need to move away from that type of policymaking, I think.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? The motion is to deny this, to purchase, deny the request to purchase service credit for Mr. David Bauer. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lemko?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Richardson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Wheelock.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yep.
Richardson.
Yes.
Max Bauer.
Yes.
Chairman Immon.
Yep. Motion passes. All right, moving on to item number 30, Commissioner Wheelock.
Mr. Chairman, I pulled this item. This is the item where we abandoned, where the motion was passed to abandon a county-run baseball program at the Civic Center. I again reiterate that this is a decision to be obeyed by the Parks and Recreation Board, not by the County, or this County Board of Commissioners. And we have, in my mind, no right whatsoever making this decision, and certainly should not have made this decision without having meetings with the Parks and Recreation Commission and the American Legion if that's the direction that we want it to go.
Okay. Commissioner Lemko.
I'd like to make a motion that we abandoned the county-run baseball program.
Second it.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to, is it the resolution that's in file? So to encourage the American Legion to move forward with the offer? Okay, as stated. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Lemko, seconded by?
Gilman.
Gilman.
Commissioner Gilman, discussion. Commissioner Thomas.
Does the American Legion have intentions of running the program now? Because I don't, I don't think we did the right thing last year by going into the baseball business, but the fact that we're in the baseball business now, if they're not going to come back and pick it up, I'm not going to cheat all the kids in this county of, out of baseball.
Right.
Does the American Legion intend to operate this year?
We, I will allow public comment on this now that we're in discussion.
Yeah, well.
We do, I just will acknowledge that we did receive a letter dated January 25th indicating that the membership has voted to sponsor the 2011 baseball program. I hope everyone's got a copy of this letter. There are probably some discussion items within the letter we probably would want to address, but...
Would you read that, please?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a copy of it.
You do not?
I got an email of it, but I didn't bring it with me.
Everybody want to have a chance to read the response?
Would you like to make some copies, Mr. Chairman?
We could if, yeah.
Would you just read it for someone?
Just read it.
I've got one here, Dennis, if you want a copy of this one.
Okay, yeah. Anybody need a copy? Are you going to read it?
You're going to read it in the record?
Not if you're going to read it.
All right, let me read it. To Larry Immon, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Dear Mr. Immon, at the regularly scheduled post-meeting on 25th of January 2011, the post-members voted to sponsor the 2011 baseball program at the Grand Taveras County Civic Center. The post-members has requested that the fee for the maintenance of the fields be set at $500 for the 2011 season. With the commitment to hiring a full-time seasonal program director and a part-time field director, the cost of maintaining the fields may place a significant burden on a large share of our players. We believe all items other than this can be worked out in a short period of time with Parks and Rec Department. The post judge advocate, Gary...
Afka.
Okay, will be in attendance at our January, excuse me, the 26th January 2011 meeting to answer general questions and to provide any clarifications you may require. Please feel free to contact myself. Any questions or concerns of this matter, sign Mark B. Greiner, Senior Vice Commander, Post 35. Okay, Commissioner Hensel.
I move to amend the motion.
We got a motion.
You can make amendment.
You can amend the motion.
Abandon the program and rent the fields to the American Legion for a total of $500 per year for the first three years.
I'll support that.
Okay.
I have another amendment.
Let me get this down.
Now, would it be, is it already for us to go ahead and make motions afterwards, just not to muddy the water?
I would think so.
Yeah.
Never mind, I won't make any.
All right, so we have a mo, the first motion is to go along with the resolution as presented. The second motion is to amend that motion to have a payment of $500 per year for the next three years. Is that correct?
Yes. You agree with that?
Is that, is that seconded?
Yes, I second it.
All right, all right, so in order to put that back into the original motion, we need a vote on the amendment. Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
I think that three years, I think the first year to get the program up and running is appropriate. I think we have an estimated maintenance cost of about $9,000 a year on those fields, and I'm the first person to say that, as I did on the 12th at the committee meeting, that we need to feel a little of the pain so that we don't make those mistakes repeatedly. But I think that it would be appropriate if we, perhaps for the first year, but I think go to an actual cost to maintain the fields for the following years.
And Commissioner, if I can clarify your thoughts, your thoughts are one year at 500 or one year at another number?
Well, originally I thought that we'd go halfway with the, with the lead, with the post, but I'm amenable to a $500, just, you know, a token, essentially, a token fee for the first year, but I think we should go to actual costs of the year, so I wouldn't support the amendment to the motion.
All right, further discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Richardson.
The $10,000 figure is based on a $33 per game fee for field preparation. It includes the mowing, includes the raking, and includes, you know, chalking the lines and so forth. It is also, by the way, the same fee that other organizations are paying for using those fields, the same fields. So it seems like, again, you know, to echo Commissioner Wheelock, you know, we're muddying in areas that we're not really equipped to be dealing with. That's why we have a Parks and Rec Commission to deal with this. So I will not vote for the amendment because I don't think we have any business, you know, working out these kind of details, or trying to work out these kind of details.
All right, Commissioner Hensel and then Dennis Aloya.
Yeah, the reason I said for a number of years is that we provide parks all over this county for people at no charge, and when we get a group of 700 to 900 youths and their families, so possibly up to 2,000 people that want to use a park, now we charge them. Well, we have parks all over where there's a handful of, you know, a dozen people that we don't charge, and that's why I said three years. But in consideration of the comments, I move to amend the amendment to one year opposed to three.
Is there support to amend?
I support that.
All right.
It's up to Commissioner Fleece.
Yes, one year is much better.
All right, all right.
But I had a comment.
So the third amendment, the third request is to amend the second one to one year and $500. Okay, keep discussion, keep going. Commissioner Fleece.
Well, over the years, and we're talking a 60-year period, 62 years to be exact, which is longer than a lot of people in this room have been alive. And I believe the veterans, if I understand the history of this program correctly, were the ones that initially helped create the ball fields. They took care of those ball fields. They had agreements, word-of-mouth agreements, with the powers-to-be at the time. And over the years, as things progressed, for 62 years, they ran a mighty fine baseball program. And the rules got stickier and stickier. Young people came, forgot what had happened in the past, so they started imposing fees. Today, for an organization like that, to have to pay $10,000 to use ball fields, like Commissioner Hensel said, when you have potentially 700 to 900 kids playing ball with their families, we provide a lot of parks in this county at no charge to anybody to use, and why would we want to penalize an institution like the veterans where it could really cost the parents, actually? So I'm absolutely in favor of the $500. I would have went along with the three years to help them get back on their feet and get everything reestablished, but I can, I can live with the one year. But I think Mr. Jones, next year, and the Parks Commission certainly should give some consideration to past history in not only what these men have done, men and women have done for their country, but what they've done for the people in Grand Taveras County over that long period of time.
All right, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to provide some facts for the commissioners, and I have to say I'm a little bit confused, so I'd be glad to get this straightened out. I've heard a lot of talk in the last three weeks about not subsidizing programs, recreation programs particularly, and how they should stand on their own. This, what has been proposed, in my mind, is clearly subsidizing this program, and I think it goes beyond feeling some of the hurt. Right now, we estimate that the cost of just caring for those ball fields to be $9,883 a year. In 2000, from 2005 to 2009, with the exception of 2009, the American Legion has paid a bill of between 11,000, excuse me, $10,351 up to $12,756 for use of the fields. In 2009, it was estimated they owed $10,351, which has still not been paid, so there's an outstanding debt there. In addition to that, we bought $10,398 worth of equipment, which I think we have no use for and could be given to the, to the American Legion to save costs on that program. So if we do a $500 one-time fee, two-time fee, I expect, a one-time fee, that's going to cost us, cost the county about $9,500, $9,300 in fees this year. In addition, there's still the outstanding debt of $10,000 that hasn't been settled, and I assume that since we don't need the equipment, we're going to be giving them $10,000 worth of equipment that's been used one season, so it's worth less than that. But in my estimation, that's going to, that value that, especially if we forgive the bill, is going to be somewhere in the order of $25,000 for one year, if we charge them $500 only for one year. And that seems to be quite a supplement for this program. I want to add that in their letter, they state they want to hire a program manager and an assistant manager. We ran the program, now it was the startup year, of course, and so Jason Jones spent some time on it, but our cost for a baseball attendant was $3,290 to run the program once the program was up and running. So it seems that the cost may in fact go up. My only point is, if you want to give the program to the American Legion, my recommendation is that you do so and you charge them the same price that you charge everyone else who uses the field. If you want to consider forgiving the bill for 2009, which would free up $10,000, that seems, we don't have that money anyway, that seems like a reasonable way to approach it. If you want to give them the equipment, which is probably valued at $8,000, that would be another way to help cut their costs for running the program. But I strongly recommend that you not reduce the fee to run this program because then it will clearly be being subsidized by taxpayers because our people will be taking care of the fields at a cost of estimated at $9,800, and we'll be paying for that from, I assume, general fund monies that go into the Parks Department.
All right, now Commissioner Gilman and then Commissioner...
What does the current motion state right now?
The motion states to approve item number 30, to abandon the county-run program and to allow American Legion...
Point of order?
Pardon me?
That is not the current motion.
The current, we have several motions.
The current motion is to amend the amendment.
That's what I'm getting to.
No, you got to...
No, it's just the one.
Just one.
All right, okay. The current motion on the floor, the amended motion, is to have the fee for $500 for one year. And then, and then future years...
Point of order, we did not vote on the amendment to the amendment.
Correct, yeah, we're in discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. Commissioner Wheelock.
I guess, you know, my problem with this, and, you know, I coached American Legion baseball 17 years ago, but the fact is, is that we do not give these kind of breaks to the YMCA who run the largest recreational facilities, programs at the Civic Center. They run a softball program, we charge the same price for preparing their fields as we do for the American Legions and was proposed. But more than anything else, this is not a county board decision. We have a Parks and Recreation Commission in place, and they're in place and they're, you know, Al can tell us, they have, by the program by which they were developed, this decision lies with them. It does not lie with us. Would you agree with that, Mr. Snyder?
I would agree that they're discretion, if they have discretionary spending, if they can, if they determine from their budget that they will fund this program in whatever manner they deem fit, that that's, it's their decision.
I, I...
Go ahead, Commissioner Gilman.
I believe he was, he was referring to the ability of the board to override the Parks Board and whether or not it's appropriate to do so. In this case, we were prepared under the, we do have our letters indicating that we wanted to pull this back to the full board instead of having it handled at the Parks Board, so we did it in the appropriate manner. And the reason I asked which motion we're on is because I'd like to further amend...
Let's, let's move on to the motion.
Well, this, and this, this will, it'll flow along with it, I think, unless, unless you prefer that I take that into a second and into a separate motion after, after we're settled out.
Let's just try to wind this thing down to a motion and then we can figure where we're at.
And I withdraw.
Is there any further discussion on the third mo, third motion? Yes, Commissioner Lemko.
I'm going to vote against the amended motions. I have a real problem for, I mean, we've already stepped into the Parks and Recreation. I think that we should give guidance to the Parks and Recreation, but not to make major motions here. So that's what, we're already doing it with abandoning the baseball program, but I think our guidance should be to the Parks and Recreation, that they negotiate the fees that should be paid by the, that we want to give them some guidance on it, but we shouldn't be actually doing the motion and creating that environment.
All right. Okay, any other comments before we vote? Yes, Commissioner Hensel.
Just a comment on the idea that it's not our place. It is our place. I have a big issue with accountability with, when it comes to government, and where is the accountability for the Parks and Rec Board? It is right here at this board because everyone here, well, the commissioners here, were voted by the public to be their voice. And when the Parks and Rec Board does something the public does not agree with, they do something like they just did. They put three new commissioners on this board that did not agree with that decision. And now the weight has shifted because of the public's vote. So it is our place and I believe our duty because the public has spoken by putting these commissioners here that think this way. So it is absolutely, this is the place and this is the time to get this settled.
Commissioner Richardson.
If you were really that concerned about accountability, Commissioner Hensel, I think you would have given this thing a little more time to work its way through, to let the public weigh in, to draw the conclusion that because three of you who are new to the board were elected and the three of you oppose the baseball program, therefore, the only reason you were elected is because you oppose the baseball program, I think is a bit of a stretch, but if you choose to believe that, that's fine. But the point of the Parks and Rec Commission is to have a focus on issues of Parks and Rec that they can spend their time on, and then they tell us what they're doing and make recommendations to us.
All right, before we do a roll call on the third amendment, I'd like to just speak on this. I'm totally in favor of having the American Legion take over the baseball program. I personally felt the board made an instant decision when it wasn't on the agenda, and I felt bad that that change was made and the American Legion was not given an opportunity to correct some of the situations that came before us, which they indicated they would try to do during the following season. So I guess I'm all in favor of having the board address this issue because we, we, in retrospect, changed it. So, but however, I am not in favor of a three-year, $500 deal, and I'm struggling with a one-year, $500 deal. I got to really think about parity and what's fair for the rest of the programs that we offer here in the county. We've always had a philosophy that up to this point with the county running this particular program last year is that we provide the... is that we provide, you know, the facility and the fields, and these groups provide the management, the time, the effort, and they pay our costs. So I think it's somewhat unfair to have a long-term arrangement where we're treating one group differently than the others. But, okay, we have three, we have original motion on the floor, and we have a second amendment, and we have a third amendment. The third amendment is to change the second amendment to one-years, one-year at $500 versus three-years at $500 in terms of cost to the American Legions. We have a roll call vote on that, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Hansel?
Yes.
This is on the third amendment?
Third amendment.
Gilman?
Yes.
Fleese?
Yes.
Wielak?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Richardson?
No.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemko?
No.
Chairman Inman?
Nope. Okay, motion fails, 5-4. So we go back to the second motion. Am I understanding this correctly?
Commissioner Inman?
Yes.
I think the second motion, which was for three years, was then amended to one year.
Correct.
And that's what we just voted on.
That's what we voted.
So now we're just back to the abandonment motion.
Right.
Well, actually, we're back to the three years. We're back to the three, technically, we're back to the three years.
Mr. Chairman?
My understanding was that the three-year was changed to one year, and that was the consent of both the motioner and the sub.
We just voted on that, and you voted no. You want to keep it three years.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest you go to the clerk.
Because we never voted.
And ask the clerk for the motion. She's the official record keeper.
But I'm not the parliamentarian. Al is. So are we voting on the second, the first amendment to the.
You'll have to vote on the three-year amendment. I think so. Right now, you have to vote on the three-year amendment.
Right.
I think so.
Okay.
Yep, all right. Now we have.
Read it, please.
Because the third, the third one failed. The second one was to approve the original resolution with, with the amendment that we have a three-year deal at $500 per year. That's what's on the floor right now.
Well, no, what's on the floor right now is granting them the $500 for three years.
Correct.
It has nothing to do with the original resolution.
Correct. I stand corrected. Okay, is there discussion, more discussion on that item? Hearing done? Roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Gilman?
Can we have the motion read?
Motion is to allow three years of $500 each year for the next three years for the American Legion.
That was not my motion. My motion was to amend the motion.
I understand it, but we have to vote, we have to, we have to vote on that amendment first.
Right. We're voting on the amendment, and then we vote on whether we agree with the original motion.
Right. We're voting on the amendment right now.
Okay.
The three years.
Okay.
All right? That's it. Three years at $500 each. That's what we're voting on. All right? Then we can pop that back into the original motion.
With all due respect, Chairman, I just wanted to be clear. We are not voting right now whether we're giving them the deal. We're voting on whether we're going to vote on that.
The three-hundred, the three-year deal.
The amended motion.
At $500. Right.
The amended.
All right. Everybody understand that?
Okay. So on the three years?
No. Yep. At $500 each year. Okay.
She called your name.
Commissioner Gilman?
I said no.
You said no? Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gilman said no. Okay. Commissioner Fleese?
Yes.
Wielak?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Richardson?
No.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemko?
No.
Hansel?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
No. Motion fails, 6-3. Now we're back to the original motion. With that, I did grant Commissioner Gilman an opportunity to amend the original motion on the floor.
I'd like to amend the motion on the floor that we, moving, restored American Legion baseball program receives the equipment associated with the program, and the remaining maintenance charges owed from the 2009 season are waived, and the 2011 season maintenance fees are halved from the actual costs. And the fees charged for the future seasons are based on actual cost.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
It's for.
All right. So now we have a motion on the floor with item number 30, with an amendment, as Commissioner Gilman has indicated, that we would waive the previous charges due. They would get the baseball equipment that we had and that we purchased. And the first year would be at half the cost, and the remaining years would be at our, at the county's cost. Okay? All right. Any questions on the motion as it stands right now? Commissioner Lemko, and then Commissioner Hansel?
Yeah, I guess, Commissioner Gilman, I would like to see in that motion that it's a recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Committee that that be the, that they be the contract that they might sign, rather than a contract through us as commissioners.
Would you like to amend that motion, then?
Could I?
It's been seconded. You can amend it.
Okay. I'd like to make it as a recommendation to the Parks and Recreation that this is the resolution that we'd like to see them to follow through on.
A second? Right. Is that acceptable?
The original. It's, if anybody seconds it, it's acceptable.
All right, okay. All right. So we have an amended motion, discussion.
I think you should vote on the original motion and then make any other motion.
Well, all we're, all we're doing is we move forward with this as we get it more confusing. But the fact is, you know, we talk about accountability and not spending taxpayer money. And this amendment gives away $25,000, or $25,000 of taxpayer money. $10,000 is due from 2009, $10,000 worth of equipment, and pledging half the cost for 2011, which is another $5,000 bucks. That's $25,000 of taxpayer money that you want to give away tonight, and you want to talk about credibility coming to here?
Okay, Commissioner Max Bauer?
I think we have to move forward, and I would, simply because I think the American Legion would like to know where they stand, so that they can move forward with the baseball program.
Commissioner? Okay, go ahead.
And therefore, I think this board just simply needs to take action.
All right. Commissioner Thomas?
I just think we should go back and vote on the original motion, and then decide whether we want to turn it back to Parks and Recs for them to deal with the, with the veterans? We're just making a mess out of this.
It's up to the people that wanted, that wanted that amendment. They want to withdraw it. Anybody want to withdraw that? The ones that made that amendment, do you want to withdraw it?
No.
No. All right. Commissioner Hansel?
You skipped me. You said I was after her.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just want to say that we have a Parks and Rec program in this county, and we spend a lot of money for parks all over. And to say we're wasting money on a program when we have a budget, that lawn is going to be cut. Okay, the grass is not just going to grow into weeds. We're going to mow that lawn, whether the American Legion uses it or anyone else uses it. So to say that we're subsidizing a program is a little bit of a stretch for me. Granted, it is focusing some funds on a specific park. With regards to the motion on the floor, we do not know that they will take the program at, at the motion that's on the floor. They said they would do it for $500. If we come back and say, you're going to pay $5,000, they might say, fine, there's no baseball. And then it's back in our laps. So I just wanted to put that warning on the floor.
That's true. Dennis?
Yep. Well, Mr. Chairman, you and I did have a discussion with Mr. Griner today, who said he had the authority to make a decision on this program.
Yes.
And his indication to us this morning was that if the board passed this and did not agree with the $500, but made the fees charged the same, but the equipment was given, and the forgiveness of the past thing, of the past debt was due, that he felt that they would run the program under those guidelines. Just pass it on. Was that correct? Did I understand that correct, Mr. Chairman?
That was the message I got. And I would welcome the member of the American Legion to respond to that if they choose to do so at this time.
My name is Gary Lofka. I live at 1688 West Center Road, Kingsley, Michigan, lifelong resident of Grand Traverse County. We felt, knowing where Mr. Al went, that when we gave the pro, the equipment to the baseball program, the county, when they took it from us last year, that would pay for partial of that money due, or all of it. To this day, we have never gotten a letter on what is what. We do not know. That, I feel, is not our fault. That was an agreement that Mr. Jones was involved with, with Mr. Griner. So to this day, we don't know where we stand. I can tell you now that if the American Legion built them baseball fields about 1948, and I watched them build them, we have a file, a lease on file from that time, which indicated changes have been made per dollar a year. We still have the original contract in our file. The American Legion's main objective is to help veterans or families in service to youth. We are not asking for your equipment back, maybe just what we purchased, that we gave to the county, pitching machines, which are worth a lot more than you think they are. At our meeting last night, we voted to take the program back. But we cannot afford to pay $10,000 a year to rent those fields for two months. That is a little bit costly. I know darn well that we do not have to pay everybody's fee to pay, take care of them fields. It takes four hours a game. Back years ago, when Tim Schreiner ran that program up there, we prepped our own fields on Saturday, bought our own chalking machine, our own chalk, and did it ourselves, and it didn't take four hours. I feel that the American Legion is being run around the county. What happened to us last year was a slap in the face and a black eye to the American Legion in this town. If you go right across here on Cass Street, you'll see a park that the American Legion built back in the 20s. On the end of the Cass Street Bridge, there's a plaque that says the end of this bridge, north end of this bridge ends in Legion Park. The American Legion has been in this county, involved for years and years and years. All we want to do, if the county don't want it, we want to run a baseball program that the kids can benefit by. And with the economy the way it is today, we don't have all the extra money, because we never made a profit in this program. I all went back into it to let every kid play for free. People nowadays do not have the money. They're trying to make a living to support three kids in the baseball program. That's plain and simple. The economy doesn't support it. We have always let every child that came and wanted to play that game, no matter their ability, they play ball. That's what we want to continue in the future. All this money that's being thrown around, if it's going to cost us $25,000 a year, the program's yours. We don't have it. We do not have that type of money. I know that we are a veterans group. We are probably the only group in the whole country, the United States, that provided a program like that for 62 years. Every other post in this country supports one or two traveling ball teams that go to tournaments, and that's all they do. People came from all over the United States, and Puerto Rico, and foreign countries when we hosted the 2006, '48 convention here. They could not believe it, that we took on that amount of work to do it. So therefore, if whatever you folks decide tonight is up to you as a board, it's going to cost us that kind of money to run a program, you're not going to have a program. I can tell you that right now, because we don't have the money to do it, and the members will not support it.
Dennis?
Sir, I just wanted to point out, the board's not talking at all about $25,000 to run the program. $21,000 of that dollars, of that 25 that we're talking about, are monies that potentially, they're saying they're going to either forgive, you know, pass bills.
True.
Or give equipment. So we're not talking about you paying for that.
I think you made a statement that it costs $9,800 to prep them fields. Is that just the Legion's cost, or is that every organization, is there paying the same fee?
Everybody pays the same fee. Yeah, everybody pays the same fee on that.
Because I can remember back years ago, when it went over $5,000, we thought it was quite a bit of money.
Yeah, I think it was back in the 90s, as I recall, that the change was made. And I don't think before that, I think maybe even before that, you guys were taking care of the fields yourself. And then you asked the county to take it over, and that's when they started charging the cost to it. But you, that same rate is charged everybody for the field, just like, just like you. But that, but I just wanted to clear, that $20,000 is not something that anybody's talking about charging you. That's potentially giving you $10,000 worth of equipment, and potentially forgiving that, the bill for 2,000.
That goes the other way. When the county took the ball program, we had all this equipment. Pitching machines are probably, I'm not sure what they cost, and nets. We gave all that to the county.
Yep, and we appreciate it.
Probably more than $10,000 worth of equipment. I don't know.
Yeah, well.
But there's no profit.
There was some equipment, yes.
In new baseball, in some years, we have a couple thousand dollars left to start the program with again the following year. And that's not a lot of money to run a baseball program on. Time you have organizational meetings, and you have to get paperwork done, and this type of thing, that's, that's a lot of money. We don't have a dime. The American Legion, best of my knowledge, and I'm a 30-year member, have never benefited one bit of profit from this program.
Well, I know that Mr. Griner told me on the day that the program changed over that there was $7,600 left over in the program. And he was going to talk to you guys about setting up a scholarship program with that money. He asked me what you should do with it. And I suggested perhaps a scholarship program. And I don't know whether that happened or not, but it was some money.
Fortunately, we still have it.
Good.
Because part of the agreement a year ago, when we gave you the equipment, was to write off part of that bill or all the bill. We never got nothing to write, and instead it was ever taken care of.
Right.
And that's, my main concern is, if this isn't done now, 10 years down the road, you may change directors, and here we come, and we get a bill for all this money.
I think I agree with you. We should get that straightened out.
It needs to be done. It hasn't been done.
All right. Commissioner Gilman, and then Commissioner Wielak?
I'd like to thank you. I'd like to thank you both for your service and for participating in the American Legion baseball program for all these years. And I'd like to say that I'm, I'm going to try to help see this cleared up now, as you've requested.
Thank you. Commissioner Wielak?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that it would be appropriate to ask the county's Parks and Recreation Director for comment on this subject.
I'd be happy to do that. All right. Is, any more comments from the American Legion?
No, sir.
Okay.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And your efforts.
Okay, thank you. Does the Parks and Rec Director wish to speak?
The only comment I have to make is, this decision is up to, it's not my decision to make, frankly. It wasn't my decision to make last year. This was a decision that was made by the County Parks and Recreation Commission, and then voted on for us to take on that program last year at this board. Because this was voted for at the Parks and Rec level and at this level, it's up to you guys again this evening. I'm happy to answer questions. There's not necessarily any commentary that I'm fit to give in telling you how to answer, how to make this decision. All right?
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No. Thank you.
Has the Parks and Recreation Commission discussed abandoning the baseball program?
It was, it was not an issue discussed last month at our, excuse me, last week at our meeting. It came up as a topic of discussion. The Parks and Recreation Commission didn't necessarily weigh in either way on the decision they would like to have seen.
There was a meeting held this, this week, though, that was requested by the president of the Parks Board to meet with the chairman of the county board. And I, and I think the vice chairman and the representative of Parks was invited to that meeting. And I believe the vice president of the Parks Board and another member showed up for that meeting, along with those three individuals and myself, to discuss the issue. But there was no formal action by the Parks Board.
And to tag along with that, it was. I believe it was the, kind of a mutual understanding that whatever action we take at this point, at some point in time in the near future, we should have a joint meeting with Parks and Rec
meeting with Parks and Rec to discuss, uh, philosophy moving forward. Can I clear up the amendments, and then we'll open it up to public comment, would that be good? All right, okay. All right, we have a, as it stands right now, unless I stand corrected, we have an original motion to approve item number 30. Now we have a second amendment, we have an amendment to that, the First Amendment, and that's to forgive the debt, um, give them the equipment, first year half cost, and then following years would be at our, at our county cost. Um, and that was then amended to indicate that that, it would be merely a recommendation to Parks and Rec. So what I'd like to do, unless I hear any more discussion, I'd like to have a vote on the last amendment, and that is that the Rec, that any action taken be just a recommendation to Parks and Rec. So can we have a vote on that, please? All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Fleece?
No.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
No.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henchel?
I'm sorry, could you read the motion again?
The motion-
I thought I understood it, but now I'm looking at popular vote, and I don't-
The amended-
Either I don't understand it, or they do.
We're voting on the amendment, and, and the amendment is to have the, the, the first motion merely a recommendation to the Parks and Rec Board.
Thank you.
Okay.
No.
Gilman?
No.
Chairman Inman?
No. All right, that fails, um, 5-4. Now we have a motion on the floor to approve item number 30 with-
No, just vote on the amendment.
Just write the amendment.
What was the vote on, what was the last vote just taken?
That was just for the recommendation to Parks. But that, that vote was just to take whatever we're going to recommend, whatever action was going to occur is a recommendation to Parks and Rec. Okay, that's all we voted on.
Who voted nay, or no?
It didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
Do you want me to tell you who voted no?
Yeah, we can do the four noes. Go ahead.
It was five.
It was five. There's five noes.
The five noes were Commissioner Max Bauer, Henchel, Gilman, Fleece, and Chairman Inman.
So it did not pass?
Right, okay.
Okay, all right, cool. All right. Now we're going to vote-
On the original resolution.
No, we're going to vote on the amendment to the original motions.
Commissioner Gilman.
And that's Mr. Gilman's amendment. All right, it's a good thing I took a class in the, Robert's Rules of Work. All right, now we're, now we have, uh, before the board, uh, the First Amendment, and that is to forgive the debt, give the equipment to the American Legion, ours and what we bought. First year would be at half our cost, following years would be at, um, the county's cost in terms of cost of fields.
Actual cost, right.
Yep. All right, any discussion on that? All right, roll call vote on it, please.
Commissioner Wheelock?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Richardson?
What was that vote?
No.
No?
Richardson?
No.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. That motion passes, uh, 6-3. Now we have a motion finally.
We're back to the original resolution.
Original resolution.
Which is, the original resolution is to abandon the county-run program and to recommend, uh, and to recommend the American Legion to run the program for 2011, and that now is one motion to include, forgive the past debt, give them the equipment we have and what we purchased, first year at a half cost, following years at county's cost. That is the motion at the table. Now I will allow public comment.
I thought the city used to get in some twisters.
I knew this was going to get twisted.
I'm, I'm here as a, uh, as having been a participant in American Legion ball, having three sons that played American Legion ball, and eight grandsons, what?
What's your name?
Oh, I'm Ralph Soffard, 220 Hereon Street. I thought you remind, remembered me, but-
I'm sorry.
Not him.
Particularly you, seeing how you're about a year older than me. But, uh, it was my concern, when I first, and I really became involved in this, uh, a year ago, when you passed the motion to do away with, with the American Legion, which I thought was terrible. It was a slap in the face to me as a veteran, and it was a slap in the face of me as a person and a taxpayer in this community for those 700 and 800 kids that play ball. And that's what we got, we can't, we talk about supplement, about supplementing a program, how about the swimming pool? Now, I've been here 30 years, and I saw times when it had a $500,000 deficit, and I was told recently, oh, we got that down to $200,000. You talk about that. I think we could take consideration is not what, what this, what we doing for those kids. I did give a presentation last night at the American Legion, and I said, you know, my concern is the honor of the unit itself, American Legion Baseball. That means something. You know, that's Americana. We're fortunate to have that program, and we sit here talking about this and about that. You know, they need to get that program started up. They didn't get it, they didn't give it up. It was taken away from them. They need that opportunity to get it going, and it doesn't come cheap. You know, uh, you know, they have their, their, their programs, and by the way, they have a number of programs, as I found out last night, that they're, they're also involved in with other veterans or other organizations. It's time to quit thinking about the $10,000, and it's time to start thinking about the 500 to 800 kids. If you do the program, probably be back up to 800 where it belongs, and you won't have them going out into the other programs throughout the county. You know, so I would hope that you're going to vote on this, and it sounds like you've got it worked out, and that you'll, you'll negotiate through that, and let them, you know, let them take the opportunity. They've got the skill, you know, they've got the people have done it before, they did it for 62 years, and that's not bad, a bad record in this county or, or in the city or anywhere else. So I would implore you to, you know, to vote for this, and give them every bit of consideration you possibly can. Thank you.
Any other public comment regarding the motion on the floor?
Call a question.
Okay, um, any further comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Lemko.
Yeah, I, you know, my biggest concern on this is that I would, I would challenge the American Legion to bring back American Legion Baseball to our community where it was maybe 10 or 15 years ago. I think we've let it slide for a number of years. It's not the number one recreational program in our community. Baseball needs to be brought back and be brought back strong. This is where kids really start to learn about recreation, sportsmanship, how to play the ball, how to get along with each other, and how to go on to the next level. This is a great opportunity for the American Legion, and I really encourage you, step up to the plate, don't hit bunts and singles, hit a home run. Give us something really, that we can be really proud of, of a great program, because the veterans, you are people that we are proud of, too.
All right. I guess the comment I have is that I'm willing to support, support the motion on the floor. As Mr. Greiner indicated to us on the phone, um, several times to Dennis and I, you know, they've got an, an aging, um, membership, and the bottom line is they're going to have to go out and hire somebody to keep this tradition going, uh, and that would be the concession I would make for the first year half cost, is to give them the ability to, uh, have a little bit of financial consideration for that first year, to get the structure in place, to get someone hired in. Uh, Mr. Greiner felt, at least he conveyed to me and Dennis, that he felt that, um, that they could make the program work, uh, and they just needed that first year break. So, um, that is my comment, so I would support that. Any other Commissioner comments before we vote? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve item number 30, which is to ban the county-run program, and to encourage the American Legion to take the program, with the addition that the county forgive the past debt if it wasn't a debt, uh, give the equipment, um, that we got from them and the, and the equipment that we, we purchased. First year would be at half cost of the maintenance of the field, and the following years would be at the, at the normal cost associated with maintaining the fields. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Richardson?
No.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Chairman Inman?
Yes. Motion passes, 7-2. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. For those that stayed for this conversation, we thank you for your patience, and we are going to move on to item number 34 of our consent calendar. Commissioner Max Bauer.
Um, I just don't wish to consent to this. I, I believe that when you have a debt, you pay it, and this is postponing a debt, and I think that's wrong. And that's just my opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson.
First of all, I would move that, uh, we, uh, do, do, make the resolution as, as stated in the book.
Okay.
And then I would just comment that I absolutely agree with you, Commissioner Max Bauer, but the number that we're being asked, the money we're being asked to pay in is, you know, this thing that sort of floats up there in the sky, and MERS sort of goes, oh, pay this much, and then pay this much. So who, who, who knows where it comes by? We've already had discussion tonight about how faulty their assumptions may or probably are, and so if we can, if we can save it and delay it for a little while, then so be it.
So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Richardson, and with second by Commissioner Fleece. All right. Further discussion. Um, I have a comment, and that is, uh, I think it's, I think it's a fair amortization for the amount that, um, we have in terms of unpaid, of a liability amount, and, um, I did have a discussion with our representative on that board, Sally, who works for Grand Traverse County, and she indicated to me that MERS has clearly heard from the majority of counties around the state of Michigan that participate with their program, and they are now doing, um, another evaluation, and they're going to come up with another recommendation for those that are currently in and funding the plan, and those that are not participating within the plan. Um, and I think the 16 years is, at this point in time, is a fair amortization for that unfunded portion that we have. So, um, any other comments or questions? All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution as presented.
Yeah, but I don't know. It just, just one last comment, just for the sake of, of those who don't understand. Essentially, what we're doing is, we are, uh, bypassing this, we're, we're allowing, or we're, we're basically telling MERS to freeze our credit card payment at, at, at the particular minimum it's at right now. Um, and, uh, otherwise, they could accelerate the payment, it would cost us immediately about $300,000 more.
Correct. Okay, thank you for that explanation. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, uh, we want a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
No.
Lemko?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Fleece?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Yep.
Chairman Inman?
Yes, passes 8-1. All right, that takes care of the consent calendar, um, with items removed. Um, we have no unfinished business, we have no indicated new business. Next item is the second public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, I will, I will now ask the board if they have any public comment. Commissioner Lemko, you had asked to speak on that section.
Yes, um, we had a, a motion come before us from the South Civic Center, asking to be a separate park authority. I think that's really wrong, and we probably have done a great injustice to them by not reaching out to become part of their organization or asking them to become part of our organization. When we start allowing organizations, townships, villages, cities, to develop a separate park authority, it takes away the opportunity for us to be able to create a collaborative opportunity to market and bring parks and recreation under one roof. I really believe that we have city, county, townships, villages, schools, the conservation district, all have individual parks. It's fragmented. When a tourist comes into our town, they don't have a clue what we have or what we got. Our own people that live here in our communities don't have a clue unless they use a particular park. They don't know what parks they are, are even part of the Grand Traverse County system. I really believe that we should be sitting down and having a community discussion about how do we really want our parks to be developed in the future? Do we want to be fragmented, or do we want to be part of one big authority? How can we best provide it? How much money are we currently spending on parks by the fragmentation? I really feel very strongly that the community has to come together and have a discussion about this, and I would encourage the Commissioners to open the door and start that. Also, I think that our Parks Commission has done an injustice to us because they haven't reached out. They're spending so much time running a pool, running a baseball program, running the, the Twin Lakes Camp, that they haven't had time to really look at developing and managing our parks in our community. So I'm really hopefully and strongly encouraging the, our commission to make that a, a priority for us to be doing for this year, to look at how do we collaborate, how do we bring parks together, and how do we make it so that we become a county of parks?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
Herb, I don't think you can even, even you can talk Green Lake Township, or Blair Township, or some of these townships that have their own parks, and, and, um, let me remind you, the one in Green Lake is 280 acres. You would have a nice day talking them into that, just because they've been developing their parks for longer than we have.
I don't think we should own any of those lands. I'm just talking about the management. I'm just, but I'm just saying is that when budgets are cut, and we're all seeing this in all the townships, the money is going away, and if we don't have to budget for mandated, we only budget for mandated services, parks are not mandated-
That's right.
-and some of them will be, start to go into disrepair, and we need to have this discussion.
Commissioner Wheelock.
Well, I've heard from a number of Commissioners tonight about how this commission should be telling us how we run Parks and Recreation in this community. Uh, so I'm going to ask that on the Resource Management Agenda next month, we have discussion about abolishing the Parks and Recreation Commission. You know, if we cannot, if we can not, if we're not willing, we do not feel that they're doing their part, we're the ones that have the accountability, we want to tell them that they're doing an injustice because they're not managing the parks, they're, they're not, they're not acting in the best interest of the community as a whole, then why are we asking these people to serve? So I'm going to ask that the Resource Management Administration Agenda next month include a discussion about abolishing the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioner Fleece.
I think there was a misunderstanding, at least by some of the members on this board, as to what Civic Center South's invitation was and meant. It was really just that, an invitation for a position of a county commissioner that represents District 8, or Larry's District, what's your District?
District 2.
2 or 8, to, uh, sit on their board and have voting privileges because of the money the county has appropriated to them in the past for a regional park. And when the county decided, when this board decided last week not to do that, they understood that fully. At last Thursday's meeting, I explained it. I said, uh, and they didn't get a bent nose over it. The only thing, um, perhaps I, I should have came to this board a lot earlier because all their legal work, they have to strike the county's name, and we'll just merely have a liaison position on that board, a non-voting liaison, in the future. But that's all they were doing was being nice and inviting us to sit on their board, and that's, that's all they wanted. They, they didn't want any more money, they didn't want any villages, and Herb, a lot of people have died waiting for the county to develop a park in their system. of people have died waiting for the county to develop a park in their system. We got children that grew up, went through childhood, went through adulthood, went through their retired life, and have died, and the county never provided any park facilities for them. So consequently, like Dick said, and I agree 100% with him, Green Lake, Blair, down there, it was sparsely populated, so they did a regional park, but at least they've got parks.
I agree.
And they're more than, they can more than adequately run them. They know what they want, they live there.
All right. Before I go to Commissioner Willock, does anybody else have any public comment they want to make?
I have announcement when we get to that.
All right, okay. Back to Commissioner Willock.
Well, Civic Center South is an absolute prime example. Here is a, here is a place where this county Board has appropriated money and moved forward, with never one time has that process come through the Parks and Recreation Commission. You know, we have a Parks and Recreation Commission, they're charged with running the recreational programs in the county, and we overwhelmingly have, time and time again, appropriated money to a private organization to, to develop a park. From this Board, not through the Parks and Recreation, not showing up in the county's Parks and Recreation budget, it shows up and is appropriation. It doesn't even show up in our budget as recreation money.
All right. I guess the, if I can make a remark, that's exactly why I'd like to put on the Resource Management Administrative Committee meeting agenda. The question of having a joint meeting with the Parks and Rec Commission, because even though we have these guidelines and rules, we have a splitting philosophy going on here among a governing Board and a, and a Board that we've asked to take on the responsibility for the, for the Parks and Rec, and I think, I think there's, there's a healthy discussion to be made. I mean, I don't want to go in there with an elephant gun and say, you're all over, because I think they do truly provide a real value to this county Board and to the citizens, because we have a, we have a lot of parks out there, and master planning, and the day-to-day stuff that, decisions that need to be made, and frankly, I think we've got enough on our plate at this level, and that's why we have all these various boards and commissions made up of the citizens to help us move forward with different policy and budgetary decisions. And I don't want to get to the point where we're just eliminating all of our boards and commissions and everything ends up at the commission level, because you might as well just plan on putting an office in here for all nine of us, and we're going to go Monday through Friday, eight to, you know, eight in the morning till five in the afternoon.
Wouldn't Dennis enjoy that?
And we're all going to be considered full-time, so, you know, we got to think about that as well. So if I could add that to the agenda for Resource Administration and Management, I would appreciate that. Any other comments? Commissioner Fleese?
Speaking of time, the Red Wings are almost ready to start their period.
All right, Commissioner Fleese?
You know, in response to Commissioner Willock's comments, Civic Center South was, isn't, and never will be a part of the county park system, and that's why it didn't come through Parks and Recs, which administer county-owned parks. That park down there is owned by the municipalities involved. And to invite them to go to Parks and Recs for an appropriation would be like inviting the Pope to a Baptist convention, in my opinion.
All right. Any, any other Commissioner comments? All right, good, let's move on to notices and announcements. Commissioner Max Bauer?
Yes, the Senior Center Commission on Aging Ad Hoc Committee met tonight at four o'clock, and we went over the intergovernmental, the proposed intergovernmental agreement, the final agreement, and we made one minor recommended change. That's going to go to the Commission on Aging Board next week, and I anticipate that it will come here shortly thereafter. The other announcement I wanted to make is our very own Jen Ritter at MSU Extension and Save Kids is the winner of the Governor's 2010 Traffic Safety Award for the state of Michigan. And this is extremely significant because this award is given to police officers. An exception has been made for Jen Ritter. And I also wanted to announce that Jen has received a grant from AAA for a simulator, and this is a simulator that she is taking to the public schools, primarily the high schools, and letting students simulate driving. And this is an extremely expensive simulator. It, it will print out sheets after the student has sat at the simulator, telling the student how many times they've accidentally left the road and not realized it. So while you're texting and phoning, her work just continues to excel, and I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Thank you for that report. Anybody else have any notices or announcements? Commissioner Lemko, then, then, Mr. Willock?
Sunday, February 27th, Jazz Divine is going on. It's a fundraiser for the Grand Traverse Pavilions, and from great cheese and wine and jazz will be brought on. It's $25 a person, so if you're interested in going, that's, that's going to be a great event on the 27th of February.
All right. Who was next? Commissioner Willock?
Just a reminder, I think I've spoken to everyone, I will be out of town next week, I will not be here for public safety, and I assume that Vice Chairman Thomas will be able to handle that.
Okay.
Keep all of you in order.
I don't know if he could run a meeting, can he?
I think we should move that Parks and Rec decision to public safety. What do you think?
Then they'll have, then they'll have another three-hour conference.
All right, any other notices or announcements? Commissioner Thomas?
I asked you about Central Dispatch.
You are on my list here for that.
Well, I know.
We're going to get you a right list.
I know, but we're going to have a, I'm going to have a conflict every month.
Because?
Because Sewer and Water is the same.
Well, I had a similar conflict with emergency management. So let's address that. Can we meet on that?
We'll work on it.
We'll work on it next week. We'll work on that, because I want to get back to the five townships and verify that that's going to be the date and how they're going to work it.
Whoever would want to take the Central Dispatch, they do have good doughnuts.
Yeah. Yeah, let's address that. I want to get with Sewer and Water first. All right, anything else under announcements?
Chairman, just, we met with the Corrections Union today, and we're, we'll be going to a mediator very soon. Last thing is, just to thank all the students that are here tonight for their, I think, civics classes, and ask Commissioners to stick around afterwards for a few minutes. They need two signatures each.
Cool.
I think you do, right? So you can get those signatures for them before they leave.
You guys, you've never seen anything so funny on TV.
I hate to have them go back to their teachers and say, what did you learn? And they're going to say, grownups argue too. Okay. We do thank you very much for attending our meeting, and we'll be glad to stay over and sign whatever you need. All right, do we need a closed session?
No, sir.
All right, do we have a motion adjourned?
Yep.
Moved by Thomas, supported by Fleese, all favor? Aye, close passes. We stand adjourned.
I'm pretty sure that was a record of amendments.
It was a real challenge for a new chairman.
It's a good thing I went to that training.